We'll call the August 11th, 2020 meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we do, we will have a moment of reflection and go into the pledge of allegiance. So if we could take a moment of reflection for those people that you want to have in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. If you would allow, I want to ask the council for a show of allegiance and pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Bishop, did you have an adjustment?
Well, I'm not sure when we make that.
I'm going to go now, that's fine. We have no public hearing scheduled tomorrow. The next we have is the consent agenda. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that Adam B. be removed from the consent agenda and voted on by itself. The reason I'm requesting this is because Dr. Bishop and I are related, and I don't want to give the impression that something's not right. So there's some form of a motion to remove Adam B. and to be voted on by itself.
Okay, and we'll do that. Got a motion to say. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shalton?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. We would have a motion to appoint Mr. General Bishop, at-large representative and board directors of Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport to serve in unexpired terms beginning September 1, 2020, ending September, I'm sorry, August 31st, 2024.
Second, I'd like to speak to that in one of this discussion time.
Okay. Mr. Bishop is here tonight?
Dr. Bishop is here. And a little history, Dr. Bishop has the, you know, obviously, he's well-known, he's a well-known personality here in the area. Just a little history about his nomination. When the airport authority formed 18 years ago, the at-large member is a member that has to be endorsed by all four localities, in this case, of the Virginia Tech, the town of Blacksburg, Montgomery County, and the town of Christiansburg. Back in the day, 18 years ago, when formation, the authority was formed, the one individual they felt could do that was Al Bowman, who you met at the last one, he retired. And when our board considered who that at-large person would be, when Dr. Bishop, when I brought up Dr. Bishop's name, it was, it was easy peasy lemon squeezy, so to speak, because of his reputation, his credentials, and what he's going to bring to our board. And that was several months ago, when we started thinking about who we, who the four localities would recommend. So I didn't prepare any notes, but I'm really glad that Dr. Bishop can make it tonight, and maybe if he would like to say a few words or answer any questions for people.
I would just like to say a few words, that I think we're very, very fortunate to have him to take this position. He's very well-known down here in the New River Valley, but in the Roanoke Valley, and we, I think we've just got an A-plus person here.
Dr. Bishop also serves on the Roanoke Airport Authority, which is a goal of our airport, is to work more closely with theirs to, to cut costs with certain activities, you know, maintenance activities, third-party vendors, but we see his connection with Roanoke Valley and the airport in particular, to be of benefit also to our airport, and cutting our costs and operating more efficiently. So, little background, and I'm delighted he's offered himself to serve.
Dr. Bishop, thank you so much for taking that position. I'm so glad to know how you're, how you're kind of.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
I appreciate all your service you do for our community. You're so known.
Dr. Bishop started out as a police officer here in town.
And it's good to, I usually seem that 10 till 6:00 in the morning, Ryan. So, you always leave, I don't know if you know who I am, but you're always friendly to everybody who passes you. I do admire that, that's great that you keep doing that. And I appreciate your, everything you do for our community. I do.
Well, I appreciate this. I got my start in life on, just on the other side of this hill, that's where I was born and raised, over on Quality Road, and got my career start, as was noted, here with Christiansburg Police Department, where I had the pleasure of serving, I'm very proud of that enough, the police department, where I served from 1975 till 1988.
I'm still taking up occasions.
Okay. It is pretty neat. One of my areas of responsibility as a senior vice president with the Royal Clinic is the police department comes under my area of responsibility, so still have that connection. So, I've had the pleasure of serving on the, on the Roanoke-Blacksburg Regional Airport Commission, and so I am honored to have been considered to serve in my town in this way, and so I thank you for the confidence and look forward to, to serving. So thank you very much for your kindness.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shalton?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. Under introductions and presentations, Christopher resident engineer David Clark to present the VDOT Salem District Locally Administered Project.
You still need to rest the consent agenda items, sorry.
Did I do what?
You need to still do the consent agenda items.
We did, voted six out of them.
No, we voted six.
All right.
No, we did.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Now, Madam Clark, you were right, I was taking the vote. Okay.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shalton?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Now, we have, under introductions and presentations, Christopher resident engineer David Clark to present the VDOT Salem District Locally Administered Projects 2020 Locality of the Year Award. And I believe there's a video that comes with that?
Yes, there is, and I think you're going to show the video before I...
Make sure that microphone is on, David.
Hello? Yeah, I wish it wasn't close enough. That's Anthony Ford, our locally, locally administered programs director down in the Salem District. And we have a brief video with Anthony Ford, Ken King, the VDOT district administrator for the Salem District, and Dr. Ray Smoot, who is the Commonwealth Transportation Board representative for the Salem District. And they'd all like to say a few words here, congratulating Christiansburg for winning the locality of the year award for their projects done, and then I'll speak a little bit after that.
During unit time, remember we've made an announcement like this at our annual district locally administered program day. With that not being an option this year for obvious reasons, well, we're going to announce the Salem District Locality of the Year winner. 2020 is a very special length of year. I have joined me today, I have had to announce he is our lead locally administered project coordinator of our district, I have Dave Clark, who's Christiansburg residency administrator, I have Kim King, who's our site engineering engineer, and also Dr. Smoot, our district's Commonwealth Transportation Board member, it's all we've just today have been. So first of all, was what is the locality of the year award? Real briefly, just want to bring folks that are not familiar with this, wondering why they're watching this crazy video, this is our district's attempt to recognize the great work of one of our local partners, one of our local government partners, and congratulate them on the successful delivery of the transportation program. And the way we score this locality of the year award is we really look at a couple things. We look at locality's communication and participation with us, and training that we offer, our board of office colleagues, our statewide looking for the workshop, things like that. So their attendance adds to the score. We also look at measure where our people live, how successful were they in turning around agreements, appearing quickly, the value, how successful they are with financial and human projects, and also how well they handle the construction side of the VDOT the site office basically, the products, how well they do on those. And lastly, we also look at the performance of each locality in relation to the, our networks have become a major component of how we measure our program, and also we use that to measure our localities. We also look at the number of projects that actually completed within the year that was scored. So this year, winning locality was one that scored actually 64 projects out of 68 possible ones. So, very high, very high numbers this year with this winning locality turnaround. They excel in their coordination with the on staff, they're always quick to be responsive with any issue with roads. And this year's winner has also been very competitive every year that we've won. This year, they also, obviously, rose to the top, but every year that we've done this, we did it in 2018 to 2019, this locality being in third by the smallest of margins every time we've done this. Quick sign note before we, we announce who the winner is, I'm unaware, Mr. Bean, chair, if you guys see who the winner is, but every year that we have done this, this locality has come up to me after we've done the process and said, how can we better operate, and what can we do to improve in delivery, our transportation program, how can we score better, how can we improve this? And so, so we share with them some ideas, things they have improved upon, what they do, and so, so excited to see this year that this locality is able to claim this top five. With that, I'm going to turn over a video and a mic as well to our administration here.
Thank you, Anthony. Yeah, it's certainly my pleasure to, to recognize a locality that we certainly have very, very close partnerships with, and has just done an outstanding job, and that is the town Christiansburg staff, of course, the people that make all the difference in the staff that put the town across the board, have been great to work with, they've done a great job delivering a number of projects, I'm going to highlight some of those that certainly being a member residents of New River Valley, and things to live with themselves personally and contribute to things. So, I want to highlight how important the local programs and local projects are, they represent a path of the overall transportation projects toward the Commonwealth. And certainly, you know, that importance of the locality work, the local programs, we've recognized that all of them, our commissioner, our secretary of transportation, Commonwealth Transportation Board, everyone knows how important it is, the locality and the work that they do to be working well, and working in good partnership with the state programs and the VDOT organization. And this award, Salem District was the first thanks to Anthony, I hats off to some of the staff that have been on our local programs, that really created this locality of the year award. Couple years ago, we've had the city of Galax and the city of Roanoke to also be winners of this, and this is the third time that we've recognized a locality as being the top for the year, and the town Christiansburg is certainly deserving. And this award gets a lot of recognition from the secretary, commissioner, there have been some other districts that have followed us, and it's now a second district that's also trying to recognize the locality in their district that's doing exceptionally well. I will say that it's all about partnerships, and we certainly appreciate the very close partnerships we have, particularly with the town Christiansburg, all of our local counties. One of the things I'm always reminding our staff of, that's everybody from our very headquarters, folks that are, who made this operation from our organization, or, you know, the folks that work with projects and programs, is that, you know, by and large, we have the ability to, to live in the communities that we serve. And so, our job, we're about helping to improve the infrastructure, the quality of life for the various areas in our community. And we certainly not take that lightly, and we're so thankful to have the opportunity to, to make great things happen within these areas, particularly town Christiansburg, hats off for just an excellent job. I'm going to hand it off to our CTD representative from Salem District, Dr. Ray Smoot, and Dr. Smoot can share with you some of his understandings and highlight how important this really is. Dr. Smoot?
Yes, thank you very much, and certainly nice once again to meet with members of Christiansburg Town Council. I've enjoyed that going back well into the John Leslie days, and that was the voice in this manner. I hope we will all be getting together and being conversing very soon. This recognition of Christiansburg is something that frankly is very helpful in my work that follows up that presentation, for the great emphasis on completing projects all the time, on making. And of course, it's always things that have overruns and have to build that to save more money or whatever, or time, and all that's put the town of Christiansburg on high plan is to pull, pay the four, five, six, $10 million this past year. And you know, the intersection improvement, the whole pipeline, the camp river, places I go by almost every day, so I'm welcome to take the town, work on Cresterville Road, Dawson, Depot Park, failed extension, three primary extension paid projects, all the different projects that have been finished, very effective. I want to recognize folks like Wayne Nelson, who's definitely getting this done, also Randy Weenfield, who's been on the next program, who's really committed to support you all that have helped. You know, the town of Christiansburg has shown great leadership in the area of transportation, and that's the most recent thing that has failed service to work about. My father and I have been very forward-looking, and trying to make that happen, make it happen, so available. And we are going to get that done, no doubt, but I can assure you, the secretary of transportation is very fit for this, we will get it done. Thank you all, the town of Christiansburg, to facilitate the transportation agreement.
All right, well, I hope everyone was able to hear, hear that fairly well. It is an important part of VDOT now, these locally administered projects. Years and years ago, when I started working for VDOT handling Christiansburg, most projects in town were administered by VDOT. VDOT, you know, worked with the town on, on priorities of the projects, but then it was VDOT designed, VDOT put it out the contract, and VDOT inspectors were out working with the contractor. And, you know, that's when VDOT was probably about twice as many people as it is now. With a smaller VDOT, a lot of the, the work has fallen to the localities to do, and Christiansburg's done an excellent job in hiring consulting companies, hiring contractors, inspecting and handling, just handling the project right from the beginning, all the way through to the end. And projects like that couldn't just like this, the one out there going on right now in North Franklin, you know, just couldn't be done probably if VDOT hadn't, had to do it with just our own, our own staff. And this, this award is a Salem District award, but it's still a pretty big, a big award. There's 12 counties in the Salem District, I don't know how many localities, but as Ken said, includes Roanoke, Galax, all the independent cities and towns of over 3,500 have their own program. Not all can, can manage a project like this. Blacksburg does a lot, Christiansburg does a lot, obviously Roanoke does a lot, but it just really helps the entire transportation program to have strong local administrators able to put together a project from beginning of the scoping, all the way through inspection and the final. So, as Ken had said, and Anthony had said, Christiansburg's been right up there with this locality of the year award, and we usually present it at a, we do like a little conference or meeting throughout the district, and they announce the award, you know, up on the stage and everything like that. And so, we kind of felt bad that we weren't able to do that in front of all the other localities and, and make a big presentation of it, so we tried to figure out another way to do it, and came up with this video, and I hope it's, it's sufficient in expressing our gratitude and admiration for all the work they've done here in Christiansburg. So, I don't know who I should hand this to.
Chris Bishop.
Ray?
Probably, yes.
But all hands is in the mouth of the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. On behalf of the town council, the town administrators, I am so pleased to accept this award. It is certainly, there's been a lot of work and effort going into this thing, and I'm going to take it over, and I'm going to ask the engineering staff that's here, Wayne.
Mayor.
I will present that to you and your staff, and
Thank you.
Thank you all, the job's well done.
Thank you, Brian.
Introduce your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciative of this award, appreciative of VDOT, Kim King and his staff, notably Anthony Ford, Jay Guy, and Adam Chisnawski, they're our main points of contact, and they've been great support. We enjoy developing that relationship, and as well as our relationship with the Christiansburg residency. The, I want to share this with staff, because, you know, they're, they're the ones down in the engineering room, they're the ones making it go. I first would like to reintroduce to you Devin X. Stein, she's our administrative assistant. She keeps us straight, keeps the paperwork straight, keeps the paperwork moving, as was noted, that's very important to VDOT. I'd like to reintroduce Sam Fullshider, she is, I've often felt that we have needed a engineer, civil engineer with a transportation background, and we've got a darn good right here. And we're very appreciative of your support. And, you know, this, the road here was paved by, helped by two others. I have to mention Jesse Nestor and Eli Mann, two current VDOT employees who were town employees. They've, they've helped pave this way, no point intended. But notably, Justin St. Clair, our engineer assistant director of Overcapital Projects, you heard Anthony, on time, that's Justin. And I, I'm so grateful for him, and he is, he has carried the load here, folks, I need you to know that.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, Wayne, I think, I'm grateful.
No, I was just giving Dave Clark a thumbs up, thanks for coming tonight.
Very good. I think next on the agenda, we have engineering director Wayne Nelson, about nothing on contact with College Street property owners and residents.
Thank you, Mayor Barber, good evening, council. Pleasure to be up, be back here again to talk about College Street, give you a quick update of where we are. On July 31st, we sent out 46 letters to 33 properties, that included certainly the owners, and we sent letters to the renters who live there. We have conducted about half, excuse me, a quarter of our meetings thus far, we've been scheduling meetings to meet with everyone onsite. We have a series of questions that we've developed, we're asking everyone, such as, you know, do you see ponding of water on your property after rain events? You know, do you have a basement or crawl space? Do you experience flooding in that area? Downsouts? We, we like to, as engineers, we kind of like to take a look at those things and see what's happening around the structures, and oftentimes, we can provide suggestions to homeowners in regards to minimizing the issues with, with downsouts discharging up against your foundation. We ask if they currently have flood insurance, if they're willing to consider purchase of flood insurance. We're asking them if they're willing to remove all or a portion of their fence on their property, or make modifications to the fence. We're asking them if they're willing to relocate, move, or remove other structures such as sheds and play equipment. And last but not least, we're asking them if they're willing to donate an easement to the town should, should we end up developing a project. Now, we, we take pictures, we take a lot of pictures, and we ask everyone to either email their pictures to us, or email their videos to us, and those that have hard, hard copy photographs, we borrow those, scan them, and take them back the next day. I want you to know that by and large, everyone is so appreciative to hear that council is supporting this effort, and everyone has been very respectful, and, and they've provided us a wealth of information. I anticipate, after talking with Will Drake, planning director, today, that we will probably convene close to the end of this effort to talk to administration about our code in regards to fences and sheds, and be ready to, to possibly make recommendations there in regards to code changes. Concurrently though, with this effort, it needs to go somewhere, so we know that we really would feel the need to get an engineer on board to assist with this effort. I've talked to administration, and it has been suggested at last night's water, wastewater, solid waste, and, and stormwater committee, that consider issuance of a request for proposals from consultants, so that we can get a consultant on board to study the drainage basin, study the reaches, and come up with solutions to solve this problem, and with associated cost. And that would allow us to phase, look at phasing, look at funding, be able to put together a comprehensive solution to this, to this troublesome issue, so. Even before the meeting started, I made an appointment with, with the young couple that came in to see me, and we're going to continue with that effort, and we appreciate your, your support with this. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne.
Unless there's questions.
I have a question. Would the, will the US Army Corps of Engineers be able to help us come up with maybe some engineers, and maybe we wouldn't have to pay them? Is there anything that we can make them?
They generally don't provide that service. We certainly would consult with them, and ask our consultant to consult with them, but we would be looking at an engineering firm, I call it our stable of engineers that we have, we use over the last three, four years. We have a method by which we could effectively move this along pretty, pretty quickly, if we wanted to move in that direction.
What would you expect the timeframe to be?
Well, to do what, ma'am, I'm sorry?
To finish the project from start to end.
Well, that's a hard question to answer. Only because this drain and shed is very dynamic, there's no one clear solution. I think we're looking at a number of possibilities. You know, if, if you're going after funding, revenue sharing through VDOT, you might be looking at four to five years. But that, that's using a, an outside funding source. So, our first task before we start spending money is to establish what the best course of action is in regards to an engineering solution to this problem.
Wayne, that would be the RFP.
Yes, sir.
Figure out what we need to do, what are the best options we have, and then you can establish a timeline from there.
Correct. And the RFP, we issue that, and we get into negotiations with the engineer, we define scope, and then from that, we establish a fee. But we feel through our current procurement policy, we can move this along fairly quickly.
And there's also, there's the engineering component is the same to figure out what our options are, what those costs are, what the potential funding is. And since we're at this table, there's a political dimension to this too. And the political dimension is, is that some of these solutions are on private property right now and not in the public right of way. So when those decisions are made also, when council makes those decisions in the future about what project it's going to be, that'll affect, or that'll affect private properties and that'll either, you know, that could be people that are willing to donate property or whatever, or condemnation actually. I mean, that's, because it is on private property. So that, there's a political dimension too, you're probably careful about mentioning that. But this is not in the street, this is in properties. And we'll sort of, we'll have to, these are all things that will have to be, will have to be dealt with by, by staff and council to figure out what the best solution is there. And there'll probably be more than one off, but anyway, just to mention that aspect of it. It's not in the street, it's on properties.
Correct.
Wayne, what percentage of residents up there are in favor of providing easements that you've talked to?
Thus far, everyone.
Okay.
No one, again, it's, you know, we, we go out prepared and, but it's, it's refreshing to hear the relief in their voices and knowing that somebody cares.
And I'm really grateful that you have taken the time along with some of the other people, including, you know, we, we had some tough times on that street with, you know, the fire department had to shut out. So those are great, you know, great assets that we were able to provide them with some relief, instant relief, but obviously does not, we definitely want to give them the sense of, you know, security later on, so they don't have to worry about their properties flooding.
That's true.
And I'd like to add to that the committee, we had agreed to make a recommendation to council that we support the RFP process.
I was going to bring it up there in committee reports, but what we need to do is do a budget amendment to include this into this year's budget. And that would take the support from council to do that. Yep, to do the study.
How much would that cost? Will it be around thousands of dollars, correct?
The process by which we're going to proceed would be by our procurement policy, we will solicit proposals from two engineering firms and that fee cannot exceed 80,000. And discussing it with staff, we, we feel we can get this study done for 80,000 or less. So this initial phase is negotiation and discussion of scope with the engineer of choice that we select and then define the, the, the cost and the fee. And then put that in terms of a contract and bring it back to you.
Since we're talking about, does council want to do a separate budget amendment sooner or wait until the end of the first quarter, like we talked about there in the budget side? Well, I think, I think, I think we're looking for authorization for them to issue an R, or for council to issue an RFP. Then we'll do a budget amendment once we know how much it is. Up to 80,000? Is that right?
At, at the max.
Oh, okay, you're saying up to 80,000.
Up to 80,000.
Wayne, we discussed last night, 80,000, how would, I would anticipate up to 80,000, in case it was... But what's the proper procedure, Wayne?
Well, it's 80,000, wouldn't take a formal, a public hearing to amend the budget, but it would take action to amend the budget.
Right.
And I would say, you know, that was, you know, to make sure that we can make an amendment for the, to the budget.
So do we want to put that on the next meeting?
Do you need it that soon, Mr. Nelson?
Not, not necessarily. We do have some legwork to do here with contacting a couple of consultants. And we certainly want to meet with each and explain the project, what we're looking for. We've got the boots on the ground, we've got lots of ideas ourselves, but we, we want your input.
So it seems if we wait for the first budget amendment, first quarter, we should be okay?
In October?
It's not that far away.
I wouldn't mind you coming back again after you've got some of the more ideas of what direction we're going to go and, and give us an idea of what you've come up with.
Well, we can certainly do that. This won't, you know, that process will take a few months.
Okay.
You know, you know, once we have selected an engineer, then we have to enter into contract with them. And that's where the money needs to be appropriated, at that point. So we could be, you know, we might be a month, maybe a month here.
This isn't going to happen, but I mean, I understand what you're saying. We wait until you guys feel confident you can find an engineering firm, which I think you can do in a month. Wouldn't you assume?
Yes, sir.
And what if this isn't going to happen, we don't approve the budget amendment and it just sits out there for another year? That's why I'm saying if, if, do we want to wait another two months? Or let's say the first meeting in September, we have this budget amendment to vote on so we can RFP. And that, I think that would give our engineering staff enough time.
We, yeah, we would need...
I actually think you could vote to amend the budget up to 80,000. Like, like I said, it doesn't really take a public hearing because of the dollar amount.
So we can do it tonight?
You, you potentially could.
Do we need Valerie here to that?
She's available via Zoom if you'd like, but like I said, I don't think you have to have a public hearing for just such a small budget amendment.
Let's go ahead and add it. I'll be the first to say, let's move to amend the budget on tonight's consent agenda.
My second up.
For the, up to 80,000 specifically for the water study, the engineering study, College Street.
So I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? 80,000, up to 80,000, not to exceed 80, by the park?
I am D. No, you're doing it right now.
I assume that we had a motion in a second.
I thought we were adding, so.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simes?
Aye.
Assistant town manager Andrew Warren to present the Christiansburg placemaking plan.
The flip-flopping screen, so I apologize for that, but we'll go ahead.
Make sure you hold up close to that microphone, Andrew.
Will do, will do. Good evening. So if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and remove my mask here. So I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about the placemaking plan that started in December of 2018 and really concluded towards the end of the year into the new year. And then was a bit delayed in getting to the central business committee and then to you all because of, because of the COVID this spring. But very happy to bring it to you now. This is really, my intention tonight is really an overview of it. There, there's a lot in the plan, as I think central business committee members can attest to. And so I just want to kind of give you an overview of the layout of the plan. And then, and if there is a desire by council at a later date to come back to a work session to, to be scheduled or to come back to another meeting, we certainly can do that. So there are three action areas in the plan that are focused on. And then with the help of the regional commission, we really looked at Cambria, downtown and midtown. And so we did have a little heavier emphasis on downtown, but we really wanted to make sure that we were looking at, at, at Cambria and then also midtown. And for those that aren't familiar with midtown, it really is the area, you know, that is now between uptown. So basically between the rec center and downtown, in that stretch of North Franklin. And it has, you know, such institutional uses as the Christiansburg Institute and high school and as well as the aquatic center, hopefully the future passenger rail station. And so it really has, it has a number of, of uses as long as shopping opportunities and, and future development opportunities that will help define that area. So the plan was really divided into four sections. We looked at data collection, initial engagement, just getting some feedback from the public. Then we really got into meetings with stakeholders. We had meetings in each of the three areas with business owners, property owners and other interested citizens. We did general public engagement events as well. We were at Heritage Days and, and the, the staff of the, of the regional commission spent some time up at the rec center, talking to folks as they would come into the center. So we, we got a really wide variety of, of comments and ideas. And so the third stage was really looking at those, that, that information that we received from the public as well as looking at different market data. You know, where are we losing business in, in these three areas? What are some potential opportunities for, for gaining businesses and, and strengths? And what's our occupancy rate? How many people live within a certain period of time? And we, so we got, we gathered a lot of great information on that. And then we brought in Hill Studios and started creating strategies. And, and then, and then that really led into the plan development. So it really was a broad look at extensive data, the input of citizens, business owners, stakeholders and staff that, that led to the information in the plan. So we had an online survey that was, that was very, we, we got some great responses. We had 971 community survey responses. Again, we did six stakeholder events and then at our different community events, we had 75 responses. So common themes and priorities began to emerge and we identified nine overarching goals with 37 strategies for the three areas. Nine priority projects really came out of that as, as being instrumental to identifying what, you know, a place in Christiansburg, so really making it a unique place to be. So, so what's outlined in the plan are meaningful steps forward, you know, partners to work with and emphasizing the, the strength of partnership and the need for partnership, even if a group isn't in the, you know, listed specifically in the plan. You know, it, it, I think partnership is a central theme to, to moving forward and creating great places. And then it's a meaningful reflection and evaluation. So really focusing in on downtown and Cambria for the purpose of this meeting. You know, there were, there were four goals that were listed for, for downtown. And, and you'll see this in the plan and it lists each of these goals. One being creating vibrant community gathering spaces, ensuring the best alignment of building uses. Meaning how do we get the most vibrant use of, of ground floor spaces in our downtown? And how do we look at pedestrian connectivity and accessibility to parking, things of that sort? And then how do we increase leadership and capacity of, of the town and downtown partners? And, and really that flywheel approach where once you get the wheel going and the momentum is started, then, then those community leaders are really taking over and, and creating great projects. And then in Cambria, we looked at enhancing existing community assets to spur vibrancy and then updating facades and increasing accessibility to parking and also, you know, pedestrian connections as well. So in the plan, you'll see the, the goals listed at top and this is, this is one example. So this is the first goal, creating vibrant community gathering spaces. And then it has four strategies here below. One would be a permanent multipurpose farmer's market structure, gathering space. Another would be enhancing downtown park for both recreational use, community events. Third would be identifying underutilized spaces for suitable for a pocket park. Fourth would be consider purchasing underutilized or undeveloped downtown property for green space. And, and so the priority projects are featured in greater detail that, that have come out. And one here is looking at enhancing downtown park and another is creating permanent multipurpose farmer's market and community gathering space. So this is another example. I won't go through all of these, but you've got to see the, the pattern here. You have the, the goal at the top, ensure the best alignment of building uses. And then there are, there are a number of strategies on the left hand featured and a couple of priority, priority projects that, that are, that are pulled out here, encouraging workforce and market rate rental housing in downtown and consider ground floor zoning ordinance revisions. And then again, that gets at what uses do we have that are attracting people on the ground floor and are the, the most vibrant? And it, it is a dynamic issue and really does need to be discussed more and talked through with the community. But it's, it's good, it's a good starting point to have this conversation. So with the priority projects, you're going to have more detail in, in the plan. This happens to be for the downtown park and it's, it'll have a sketch of a project, of what it could look like and describe it a bit more. This is one for Cambria where it talks about streetscape improvements. And then each of the priority projects has some, some steps for us. You know, how do we, how do we get started with these ideas? You know, who do we bring in as partners with the buddy system here? And then how do we know if we're, if we're reaching our goal? And so again, these are suggestions, but I think it's a good, it's a good guide for us as, as we move forward in looking at these three areas more. And really moving forward, again, this is really just, I want to just brief you all on the plan. I do have paper copies, if anybody would like a paper copy. It was sent out last week electronically. There is data as well that, that backs up the information that is in plan that I'm happy to share as well. And now I'm looking to go out to community groups and provide this information. If you all have any suggestions of groups that I should talk to, please let me know. And, and I guess I'd just look for any feedback or guidance or questions that you would have.
How much did the starting cost with Cable Studios?
So the, what Hill Studios cost, it was $35,000. And the entire project was $70,000 and received a $35,000 placemaking plan. And then council had allocated the, the matching amount which was required to receive the placemaking plan.
Can you put on to the downtown part, please?
Sure.
Does that seem like it's, what is that going to be there? An empty theater to show movies at the park?
No, I mean, again, the idea is that it would be an, it could be an outdoor venue. But this would, this is just an idea of how, it's, it could be more of a space than just a basketball court. And, and I think you've had ideas before as well. So I mean, this doesn't necessarily mean that this is what it would need to be. I think it just provides ideas of, of that. And then really, I think what it talks to, enhancing downtown park for both recreational use and community events. And really, I think what it talks to, enhancing Downtown Park for both recreational use and community events. It doesn't necessarily define what those community events are, but it just says that it could be more of a community gathering place than what it is today.
And I think we need to touch on that this was not Town Council alone or privileged. This was partners and Christiansburg recommendations, ideas as far as business owners, property owners, and citizens as a whole.
If you look at the information behind this study, it's extremely interesting. Because you'll get to see what the feedback was and how many people said the same thing. And it's really fascinating, I think, if you have the time to look at that.
Seems neat. They had them at the Halloween thing of the rec center and stuff like that. We had a couple meetings downtown and stuff there.
Very good. Do you want any questions, comments? Thank you for a very brief synopsis of a 68-page document, if I'm not mistaken, Andrew. Thank you. We're getting ready to go into our citizens' comments section. We have a gentleman who has requested to speak to us online, so he will go first.
He's not logged on.
He's not? All right, then I will open this for citizens' comments. You have three minutes, name, address, and three minutes. And let you go from there now. I will say this, I know that there are some firm faces here from last week or two weeks ago on the resounding request. The public hearing is closed. If you have any other additional information, certainly like to hear from you. But we had a very lengthy, very lengthy public hearing on that two weeks ago. So if you have something else to add to it, I'd love to hear it. Just move.
I'll take this off. And bear with me because I'm new to Invisalign, so I feel like I'm talking funny anyway. But my name is Angela Akers, and I live at 345 Howery Street in Christiansburg, Virginia. I grew up in Reiner, went to Auburn and went to Christiansburg half a day. But my whole adult life, I've been here in the town of Christiansburg. My husband, he's been here his whole life. I'm here about... My husband got a phone call. And I'm here on his behalf because he works for UPS. And he's gone all week to California and come back. He drives that far and back. But, so he wasn't here to be able to say this, but I'm here about the 208 Cooper Lane House. This is a family-owned house. My mother-in-law, his mother, and Dwayne Thornton actually own it, which is his cousin. It's been in the family for years. We've all took care of it. We've all went and mowed the yard and weed-eated, and my kids have done it. We've tried to take best care of it as we could. Jeff and Dwayne actually went to tear off a porch because of Henlon, Mr. Henlon, had called and said that it needed to be took down. So they went last year and did that. Jeff and Dwayne took pictures of it and sent them in to show them, you know, the job was done. And he got a phone call today saying that, you know, we needed to pay for stuff that was already done on it, that had no permission to do. Some ad, and I apologize, I can't remember all what he said. He was livid on the phone, so I'm trying to think of everything. But an ad in a paper, asbestos removal, just all kinds of stuff that we'd have to pay for, that nobody had a clue. His mother didn't get paperwork on it. Dwayne didn't get paperwork on it. You know, if there's a problem, they usually call us because his mom and dad are close to their 80s in age. So he takes care of everything. So he just wanted to make sure to let you guys know there was no permission given to do that. And the demo of Cooper Lane, you know, cease and stop all action because they didn't have permission to do that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address council? Dan, you sitting back there? Come on.
Evening. Three minutes, we got to roll. Daniel Wadere, 595 Arrowhead Trail. And I've been watching things unfold in this town for like 20 years. We moved here 18, 19 years ago from my job. We were planning on moving back to Pennsylvania after I retired. Well, I retired 10 years ago and was still here because of what Christiansburg has to offer for active seniors. We live in Pennsylvania, South Carolina. And they don't have the things to offer that Christiansburg has to offer. Being 30-plus years of age, I've been around a block and have seen a lot of different towns and cities. Christiansburg has been moving in the right direction for the last 20 years that I can see. But we have naysayers out there telling us what we're doing wrong. They need to get outside, get some fresh air, enjoy what we have to offer. We have the Aquatic Center, which is a great facility. You go over there and you watch the toddlers in the pool. It's priceless. We have the Huckleberry Trail. We have bike share program. We have skate park. We have other parks with great activities and programs where our children will learn social skills and not stay at home. We aren't learning anything on Facebook, TikTok, Twitter, you know, whatever they're doing. We need to get up and enjoy God's gifts of nature and fresh air. There's a lot brought up about parks, talk about parks. Who said we have too many parks? Try to get a field to play baseball or soccer in the springtime, they're booked. Anyway, most of the fields in Christiansburg are owned by the school district, not by the town. Now, another, it was brought up about not giving Public Works employees a raise. It seems like they come here, work for the town, get trained, get their CDL, go a couple miles away for more money. We have a turnover rate over 30% in Public Works employees. That costs us a lot of money. We need to take care of our employees and try and keep the skilled labor here. But we have to talk about all this because we're in the middle of a pandemic, so don't bust me for talking about this stuff now. And you want lower taxes, move south. Less services, more taxes, move north. Our quality of life here is good. I think we need to let our Town Council members do their job, what we elected them for. My parents taught me, if you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all. Thank you, gentlemen. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate those comments from you. It's nice to have something like that come out every once in a while. Certainly is refreshing.
Thanks. Is there anyone else to address council? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. The citizens' comments section. We move to committee reports. Street Committee, Mr. Stockton, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, the first item, Mayor and Council, is a carryover from the last meeting. It is a request by Ginn Neil on behalf of the property owner of the former CNS Door Company.
I'm sorry, what?
We have one person wanting to speak during comments.
Your space?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I need to use the presentation over here. I'm Don Potter, 250 Slate Creek Drive, and I'm speaking on the Rice development off Vinnie Avenue. What we have here is a map showing the development. The green section in the middle, I don't have a pointer, but a continuation of Vinnie will go through that. As the upper half, there's a section of Almeida that has not been connected. That also should be connected before Vinnie is finished. This is another continuation. This is a map that shows what our development looks like on Slate Creek. So it's a very nice development. It has a lot of green space. There are twin homes that fit in there. There's 42 of them. It's a very nice area to live. We are dead end because Vinnie doesn't continue through. We like that. We like the fact that we're dead end. This is a continuation of just showing you kind of what it looks like in Slate Creek, how nice and green it is. A lot of spaces between the houses. This is the other side of Vinnie. The houses there off Vinnie Avenue are all about 20 to 30 years old, but they're really nice houses and they're well-maintained. The area that Mr. Rice is proposing does not fit into either one of these two neighborhoods. It is a totally different look. This is the house off Whittle Avenue. The green area in the back is the area he wants to develop. Putting 18 single-family homes, the lots will be 50 foot wide by 170 foot deep. They don't fit into the neighborhood at all as far as the look. This is a Sania Springs out at Belmont. It is not in the city. But it'll give you an idea of what his development would look like. It's all homes that look right up against the street. And if you look how closely they are together, you literally can shake hands from one window to the other. I'm not even sure that he's going to have the development amount of space between them at this stage. This was only used as an example to show council what it would look like to have those homes in there so close together. There's not even room to run a fire truck down between them.
Don, you have 30 seconds.
Okay, this is the continuation of that. This is part of his area there. He's already developed up behind his area, the Whitsong. And it shows you what his houses look like. Those are more space between them than he has. But it's just a continuation of what he has to offer. I think his idea is great. I think 18 is too many. And I think his putting them that close together and don't fit into the neighborhood is too much. Thank you, council, very much.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else to address council? Goodbye, we have had this public hearing already. Anything else?
Ken White, 50 Whittle Way. And I did have something a little new, okay? I appreciate letting me have the chance. I tried to get your attention, but it shut down pretty quick there. I was turning into, off of Stafford, onto Vinnie the other day. Almost had an auto accident. And I thought, I don't know the data, how many there's been there, but what I saw was the lady was looking both ways. She wasn't on her cell phone to distract or anything like that. And she was just, and she had to get out into the traffic lane of Stafford in order to kind of see around, to make the right on Stafford. And that's been talked about. It's been talked about that we're on Whittle, that, you know, there's a straight drive down Vinnie, and probably people are going to take that straight drive. But it is so hazardous to make that turn. It's more than just vegetation. It's the, you know, if you've gone out there and you've taken a look, it's the bank. It's the way it's developed up. And I'm just afraid that, I started, that got me to thinking, you know. I don't know too many seniors that are going to get a $300,000 house. We rented, and we're, you know, as I said before, we're long-termers. We're going to retire there. But we're renting now to Virginia Tech professor, wonderful family. But that's who's going to have the money to buy these houses. And nothing against it, but it's going to be a lot more traffic, I'm afraid, than what's been proposed of a retirement community. I just, I know there are some seniors that have that kind of money, but not all of them. I understand that the houses are just very few to sell now. So anything that goes on the market sells really quick. So it's not going to just be seniors that are going to be moving in these. It's going to be whoever can make the deal the quickest, get the cash together, move in there. So we could have 18 of these things crowded in there. And dozens of, you know, a lot more people than what's been said are going to be trying to drive out. That dangerous road, we almost had that accident the other day. And I think we're asking for trouble if you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, I believe we met with the property owner, intersection of Vinnie and Stafford.
Correct.
And we're going to do, call it a bit of work there.
There is limited right-of-way there, but we did talk to the property owner in the corner, and they did give us permission to grade on the property and to take that bank down at the corner.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Yipin Fu. I'm 50 Whittle Way. I want to thank the council men and women here a lot because you guys have done a wonderful job. And I totally agree with the gentleman earlier. The reason I feel obligated to be here because I'm on the Whittle Way, and many elder people and young people are living there. And to be reminded of everyone, we don't have a sidewalk. And I totally appreciate Mr. Don actually show us a visual aid because we actually, my husband and I actually took the time to see the development. And then we were talking about nine houses in Vinnie. But now we are talking about 18 houses. So that means it's double the size, and it's very crowded. And it's totally different style. And I have nothing against the development, but I'm just afraid, like my husband said, that the traffic and also a lot of elderly and young people, they are not here today. And we are here to represent them because they should have a voice. And then that is, as you can see in our area, that is one of the last oasis in Christiansburg. And I remember from the past two sessions here, I remember Mr. Rice said it would take three years for that development. So that means all the people like us who are buying that home will have to put up with all these developments and the noises. At the same time, it's so crowded, it's just mismatched. And I am not against for the development, but I really feel like we should be... The beauty of the city is very important for the councilmen and women here. And I think it's important that we do have a little bit less crowded development in that. Otherwise, it's totally different in that area. And I really appreciate Don to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. So you are okay with the development, as long as it's not in your backyard?
No, that was in my backyard.
No, I'm saying, you can put it anywhere else in town, just don't put it in your backyard. Is that what you tell us?
No.
That's exactly what you... Thank you, ma'am.
Do you want me to use the microphone?
Anyone else? This is turning into a second public hearing, and I am not going to entertain any more comments on the pros and cons of this development that we're looking at tonight. So if anyone has anything different to address with the town, please come forward. If not, we're closing the citizens' comments section. We'll move on to Councilman Stockton, Councilman Bishop, Street Committee.
The first item, Mayor and Council, is a carryover item from the last meeting. It pertains to a request to vacate right-of-way in front of the old CNS Door Company, the vacant property down there at the end of Scattergood Drive. We talked about it in the last meeting. It was brought up that the applicant has prepared a revised plat and basically Scattergood Drive, the hatch area that you see, is actually right-of-way that the town presently owns. And the applicant is seeking the town to vacate that right-of-way, but still provide a permanent ingress/egress easement, which basically means the public, the traveling public, town vehicles, anyone can still, they will maintain the access through there. The reason for the request is so that they have more options to redevelop that property and provide parking and so forth because there are setback requirements related to the right-of-way line. The Street Committee has reviewed this and found that the town's interests are, and recommends approval of this based on the fact that the town's best interest or continuing interest in accessing our property down here on the left side. You see Diamond Hill Park. You see Diamond Hill Park, it's vacant now, but the town owns it and it could be, you know, it's passive recreation area and so forth. But the town's interest in accessing that property will be protected. And when a site plan is developed, the signage will be very clear that the public can still come and go at their leisure to access the park property. But with the vacation of the right-of-way line, it provides more options for the positive redevelopment of that parcel. And so if there are any questions, that's the essence of it, is the right-of-way, the right-of-way is requested to be vacated, but the town and the traveling public can still access the property through, through an easement that will be provided, or ultimately provided with a plan of development. Mr. Bishop, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I did have some concerns two weeks ago and also tonight. But my concerns were addressed and I'm pleased with the answers I received.
Okay. So the Street Committee makes that recommendation in the form of a motion to approve the plat as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion on the second. Any comments? Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
The second request before council relates to the marketplace development and the continuing adjustment of things in there to affect the development. What you see before you hear is a sketch. The shaded area is an old, well, actually, that's not, that's the shaded area, the new easement. Andrew, if you could run your, yeah, run the arrow around. There's an old easement on here from years ago where there used to be a pump station there for the town to maintain. The pump station is no longer there. You cannot go out in, this is, oh, I'm sorry. This is the entrance to the marketplace property. So that is shopper's way. That's the new leg, the fourth leg to the intersection. Sorry for clarification. So that is the new entrance. Arby's now is on the right and then left is going to be that Verizon building and then the strip, the strip over there. But the outline that he ran his arrow around is the old, or is the current easement for an old pump station. And that, part of that is where they want, they need to put their, they would like to put their sign. There's no modification of the sign. Council's already put the limits on that. But they would like to move that easement over just into that shaded area. This is about seven-foot adjustment to slide it over. The town still does need the easement, but not for a pump station, for utilities that run through there. The town staff has reviewed this and found that it is consistent with our long-term interests and the easement adjustment is necessary so that it can place the marketplace sign in that median strip. It's a grass median. So that's the essence of the request. The Street Committee recommends approval of the plat as presented, and that recommendation is also a motion.
I would support that. Is that a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion on the second. Any discussions? Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Discussion and action by Mayor and Council is under request by Caldwell Construction, applicant for property owned by Sandra Hawks and Janice Blevins located between the eastern and western terminus of Vinnie Avenue Northwest, 100 Vinnie Avenue Northwest, tax map number 435-845. Request to resume the approximately 4.52 acres from R1A rural residential to R1 single-family residential with properties. Property is designated as residential and future land use map with Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan dated 2013. We had the public hearing on July the 28th, and planning commission approved this request 10 to none.
Make a recommendation that we approve the resounding request to R1.
Can I say something?
I'll second to get it on the table.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I'm sorry that you didn't get your full statement to say what you had to say. I think what you were trying to say is that you were not against the development, but you were against the fact that there are going to be that many homes built right in your backyard. Is that correct? Okay. I do think that this is a very difficult decision to make just because I know your father has been in there for a long time. And I know the construction and I know all of the things that were mentioned by Mr. Dan today. How your quality of life is definitely going to be changing because of this. And I just find that it's a very difficult decision for us to make this because first of all, we want a connectivity to be, you know, all around through the town. But second of all, we also want sidewalks and things like that. And I do think Mr. Rice has provided, you know, through the many meetings that we have with the planning department as well, I do think that a lot of things were added that were not added in there before, that were not part of the first when they came in to ask for the permission from us, even from planning department. So I do think, you know, there were setbacks that were moved and plans that were flipped and there were two sidewalks that were put in the plans. And then they also went down in the amount of properties that they were going to be building. So if this, if I'm correct, it's 19, it's 17 now, correct? So they did, they did make some adjustments and just know that, all I wanted to make clear is that I know and I feel your pain because this is your home. So just, I wish I'm not to take it personal, but I have. And so I'm sorry for that, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or?
Do we need to make comments here on the adjustments that have been made since the last meeting for the public?
Yeah, I'll speak to that personally because after, if I might. Can I have to speak? Okay, so after the last public hearing, first of all, I've probably heard from either five or six of the residents either on Vinnie West or Vinnie East, Karma Heights, or the Slate Creekside. And as of the last public hearing, you know, I was wrestling with this myself and had not made a decision until very recently on the matter. And what we have, what we have, or what I see here, this is what I see, and Mr. Connor, I live in Seneca Springs, so it is in the town limits.
All the time.
It's just, sure, you know, that is in the town limits. This particular development is bound, Slate Creek is actually his own business. And so you have B3 on this, on the Slate Creek side. You have B3 between this particular parcel that's of interest to us right now and Peppersterry Road. Then you have R1, which is Karma Heights. Then you have the vacant property, which is also zoned R1A right now. So I wrestled with this myself and having heard the comments, some of those, my suspicions were confirmed. Slate Creek is actually a denser development than this proposal, units per acre. And that was of interest to me as well to see sort of what the density is. And as far as the R1 goes, that's the problem, or when I say the problem, it's not a problem with R1, density is the issue. And having, having been on council many years ago when Seneca Springs was developed, we just moved there three years ago, but this is a long time ago, late 2000s. The same issues were presented about density there to Mr. White, Ms. Bash, and Mr. Connor, the folks that are here this evening. So I wrestled with this. But the issue with Seneca Springs was the very same issue. It says, we don't want these dense homes right up against ours. And I get that because at that development, the applicant at that time actually put a buffer row at the back of Seneca Springs. It's actually larger lots with wider foot, you know, with a more, a house that looks more like the ones in Belmont Farms. And so Mr. Caldwell reached out to me Friday a week ago, and we talked about this. And having heard, this is sort of like Solomon to try to make a decision because, you know, you cut the baby in half or what do you do with this? Because the property will develop at some point and that road will go through at some point. So thinking about this and talking with Mr. Caldwell, I thought after hearing all of this, that the density is not inconsistent with Slate Creek. In fact, it's slightly less than Slate Creek now. And I made a suggestion to Mr. Caldwell to consider that would, that what I think would help the property owners that are here at least understand is to have that transition from Karma Heights to the more dense homes. And those would, those would be parcels one and 10 on that development. And as they revised their sketch and sent that in, it's becoming binding, I think that they, I guarantee that they will be patio homes. They are, they meet the R1 requirements, they're 10,000 square feet, they have 80-foot of road frontage, and the houses are going to look, you know, they will, the lots and the properties will look more like the Karma Heights. And so to me, leaving in summary of this, I'm sorry I talked too long, but there's a mental process there to listen to the, what was said and try to find the best solution. So I'm pleased that the applicant has, first of all, is a quality builder, probably, I want to say the best in town, but if I had to hire someone in town to build a house, it would be Mr. Caldwell. But those, that adjustment makes it palatable to me, and I think it's going to be a nice development. I understand the reluctance, but it is going to develop. But I think the revision that's been made satisfies me that this is, it's going to provide that transition. And again, the Slate Creek development is more dense than this development. So you could look at that also as a transition from Karma Heights to Slate Creek if you want to look at it that way, density transition. So I am going to, well, I already made a motion, I'm going to support it this evening because of that. But after last Tuesday night, two weeks ago, I was, I didn't know what I was going to do. But I appreciate the concessions made and so that's my.
You know, I appreciate that you had that little film there, the shots of Winsong, the homes that are already there. And I think Mr. Rice told us at the last meeting, the houses that he's going to put down, patio houses, are going to be almost identical to what he has up at Winsong. And I know I've been up that area numerous times and people are very happy with the situation. It's just a good situation. And I've known Mr. Rice for quite some time, and I think he does, he's going to make sure that things are quality and if there are problems, he is going to tackle them. And Mr. Caldwell is a great builder, and I think we have a good team right there. And I think it's in the long run, people are going to appreciate what we have there. As Mr. Stikes has said, somebody's going to have to come in there sooner or later the way that the area is being developed. And I think, you know, you're going to get here the best of the litter.
Mr. Scholter?
Just want to reiterate that lot one and lot 10 are not going to be patio homes?
They will be single-level homes. And, and, so I would say at this point, they probably will be patio down homes. A two-story home, there's no other two-story home in the neighborhood, so I don't think a two-story home would fit in the neighborhood. So they will be patio down. But now the lots are bigger, so that gives us more options, maybe bigger house or a different style house, but it will be single level.
Okay. But those lots are bigger.
They are, they are R1 size, not 300.
Any other comments?
Oh, see, I got.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you could.
Just curious about Vinnie. There's some issues and I drove up by there. Mr. White, I appreciate what you said about Stafford and Vinnie because when I tried to pull out there, I was very tentative about going out there and I reached out to Randy about that. But what's our timeline of improving that field of sight?
We can get to it pretty quickly, I think.
Okay. How about the improvements to Vinnie? That is a, I mean, that's one of our older streets and are there any options for improvement, at least from R in the town's Vinnie, that we can look for capital improvements in the future for that street?
Probably need to get the engineer's staff to take a look at that.
And I think that would probably be up for council in the.
Zooming?
Yeah, next year and working with homeowners out that way to see if we can improve that street somewhat. And I had, had one more question. Now, I know years ago, whenever we had these larger developments, Mr. Rice, is that we, you know, V-Dot always recommended in these newer developments to have some sort of bend or curve in the road that naturally slows down traffic. Holy shit, Kane. Is, yeah. Is it just we don't have enough space here to do that? Because I will say, coming from probably New River Village, when that connects, that's going to be a straight shot straight over to Stafford Road.
From Scholter, it is, it's a short stretch of land.
Right, I drove up there.
And that easement that we're dedicating as right-of-way is already there. So that 50-foot strip was dedicated when the Almeta subdivision was done back in 2012. So that 50-foot is already there and dedicated as an easement to the town. So it's there and that's the same place that we'll be dedicating that right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I do agree with what you said, Scholter, about trying to do something with the rest of Vinnie Avenue because it's very narrow. It just, it doesn't fit with the rest. And if you're building this nice little small road over here, then you don't have a real attachment to the other road. It's just going to look like a funnel, so.
Madam Court, Mr. Bishop, I'm sorry. You good? Am I good? Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
This is 6A. Conditional use request continues on a preceding request. Property owned by Sandra Hawks and Janice Blevins. Planned housing development consistent with single-family homes and density of development not to exceed 4.3 units per acre. I believe it is less than that, 3.7.
3.7.
Between eastern and western terminus. Public hearing was held on this July the 28th.
I'll make a likewise motion to approve the request for the CEP as presented.
One second.
Motion on the second. Discussion.
I do have discussion on the development. I just want to say and reiterate to, for those that are watching and are here, it's an extremely difficult decision because I agree with Mr. Stikes that eventually it will be developed, whether it's done sooner or later. But I've heard from a lot of neighbors who are not too thrilled to have this in their neighborhood for multiple reasons. But one of the big concerns was building two houses, waiting till they sell, and then building more, just pulling out what people have to face. So that's a very large concern for me and the people that have talked to me. And also their concern is the houses do not seem to fit into the subdivision. And I know that you mentioned what you did about the other subdivision. But if you do look at what's on Vinnie, they're larger road frontages. They are going to seem like they're squished in there. So I just wanted to reiterate what I've heard from a lot of people and concerns, and that will definitely sway my vote tonight. Thank you.
You know, Madam Court, go ahead. I'm sorry, any other comments? Would you call, would you call council, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Cooper? Councilwoman Sacks?
No.
So what was the?
No. The second one? Next, yeah. No.
Yes, no?
No.
No. Okay.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
This is file one. Thank you. You know, there's, Randy, we could use it effectively in other areas. There's nothing to prevent us on the intersection of Vinnie and Stafford, put a stop sign on Stafford.
It would be legal to do that. I just don't think it necessarily goes for traffic, but the Street Committee could take a look at it.
Something to consider. Thank you. Small business recovery grant program, other COVID-19 related relief. Mr. Williams, this is yours.
Andrew is going to present.
Good evening again. So, this evening, we want to provide a little bit of information of kind of where we are with CARES Act funding and, and a grant program that has come together with Montgomery County and the town of Blacksburg for a small business recovery grant. So, as a bit of a background, as you're aware, CARES Act is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, the 2020 of the signed end of law, the end of March. Virginia received $3.13 million, 645 million of that, with the exception of Fairfax County, was distributed to Virginia cities and counties, they, they had an allocation directive from the federal government. And Montgomery County received over $17 million. This was an increase of what was originally reported by about, it was increased by two, right?
Yes, double.
Yeah, so, and, and that allocation was based on population census data that the state used to allocate, to allocate the dollars to the, to the counties and cities. So, the finance directors back in April, Montgomery County, the town and, and Blacksburg got together, and they came up with a, a plan for distributing the Montgomery County's dollars, because the state did say if you do have towns within, incorporated towns within the county, then, then you do need to work with them to distribute the dollars to, to, working with the towns. So, they did, and they came up with a, with a strategy for looking at allocating 25% to the coronavirus task force to help support testing. And, and then the remainder is to be split between the three localities, and it's based, they didn't really feel like it was fair or equitable to really take one population set of da, of data, so they looked at three and averaged those three. So, they looked at state population numbers and school age population, which I believe were both provided by Weldon Cooper, and then the population reported by localities at the end of 2019 to the Auditor of Public Accounts in Virginia. So, by averaging those, they believed it to be, and appears to be the most equitable solution for, for all three localities. So, the town would receive $3,223,800. So, in general, CARES Act eligibility requires, requirements are that the expenses were incurred due to COVID-19 public health emergency. So, if you want to get reimbursed, it has to be shown that it's, that it was caused by COVID-19. It's not accounted for in, in the July 1st, in the, in the 2019 budget. And, and then the expenses had to be incurred between March 1st, 2020, and have to be spent by December 30th, 2020. So, we kind of have a short timeframe that we're working with in order to look at how we're going to allocate these dollars in the community and, and with efforts to, to try to address the coronavirus in our community. So, there'll be additional information that will be forthcoming on, on other expenses that, that we'll be proposing for the, for the CARES Act dollars, with capital expenses for the town, as well as potentially other community projects and dollars that could go out to the community to support, to support other needs that, that have been identified. But tonight, I'd like to talk to you about the Small Business Recovery Grant, which I mentioned is collaborative effort between Montgomery County, the town of Blacksburg, and town of Christiansburg, and some standards have been developed, and we'd really like to, to get any feedback that council has this evening, just in general, on the program, because it is one of those programs that is going to take, you know, a number of months to roll out, and, and we want to make sure that, that we, if, if council's supportive of it, that we're expending those dollars before the end of the year. So, this is supported, you know, by, by the relief, you know, bill, and, and which the US Treasury says, you know, that one, one of the goals is to, is related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closure. So, we're really focusing our, our grant program around looking at how are people, how were the businesses affected during this time? And, and primarily through, you know, March through June, but it could be, if it was seasonal employment, they could have been affected during different months. So, we're really looking at, you know, kind of three-month periods during, during the year to see how they were affected. So, they are one-time grants, and, and again, this is developed in partnership and modeled after other localities, and we're also trying to gain knowledge from other localities, like Floyd County has already implemented their program, and they've given us some, some good feedback and looked at, looked at our, at our criteria. And, and so, we're just trying to draw on the knowledge of those that are a little bit ahead of us in, in this process. So, some example, samples of eligibility criteria for, for business that would be applying for a Small Business Recovery Grant would be that it had to be operational as of March 1st, 2020. It would need to show a loss of revenue or a loss of net income, and that could be for any time period, really of a three-month period in 2020, from March to present. So, again, like I said, if, if there's a business that is more seasonal, this would allow them to shift those months to show that they, they did experience a loss of income or a lot, a loss of revenue. The, it really is intended for small businesses, so we're looking at anywhere from someone having a, being really a half employee to 50 full-time employees or full-time equivalents. So, say if it's a restaurant, you may not have 50 full-time employees, but you may have, you know, 50, you may have the equivalent of that because of many part-time workers, such as people that work 20 hours a week or 10 hours a week. So, and, and they would have to show that in their application. So, the maximum funds that would be available, based on the full-time equivalents, would be $1,000 per full-time employee for the first five employees, and then $500 for every employee beyond that. So, the maximum award would be $27,500. So, they would have to show, and not, not all grants that we researched did require showing expenses, but, but the group did feel like it was important for, for accountability to show that the dollars were being spent on expenses that, that were permissible. So, because these are dollars that the, the county does have to cite, sign a state certification saying that they are, you know, they are meeting all federal guidelines, and, and we will need to sign an agreement with the county saying that we agree to that as well. So, we, we want to do this right.
Can I stop you really quick? Well, real estate fees, can that, can that be used for that as well, or not at all, since they were asked to be shut down for those months?
I, I can look at, as far as real estate fees, are they part of the transaction?
Well, you got like mortgage payments here and visas and these payments, but I guess what I'm asking is for the real estate payments they have to make to the county and the town, will they be, will there be money that can be used to give to this business owner so they can pay for, help them pay for that real estate?
You mean the taxes?
Taxes, yeah.
Yeah, that, that was, that was in there originally, and I think the thought was that, that, that it would be paying money directly back to the locality, and there, there has been fees and penalties waived, and, and then so people would have additional time to make those payments. That is not in there, that's certainly something we can look at again, I know, we have talked about that, about, about taxes.
And then what about water bills?
I would, I would check, really check.
Yeah, and water bills as well.
I think that was one of the caveats, that you can't use it to pay yourself based on the county, because that's what the county would be doing, is, oh, you know, we're going to give you this CARES Act money, but you're going to pay your taxes on that.
And for you, for utilities, it's, yeah, it's, it's.
But, but, you guys aren't going to make the checks out to AEP or the mortgage company. You're going to, if, if the company qualifies, you're going to award this amount of money, and if they wish to pay their taxes with that, they can do that at that point, or they can use it for any one of these, but it's their choice, once they are awarded based on this criteria, how they want to rearrange their money and how they want to pay it back, correct?
Well, I think they would, they would need to qualify, I think, for these eligible expenses. I mean, I think once we provide.
Right, but you're not, you guys aren't going to show up and make sure, hey, you're using this to pay your mortgage company, we want proof of that?
But if they were audited, I mean, if, if there was an audit process that was added to this after the fact, then they would be responsible. Similar to, I think some companies have, have been presented that with the PPP program, where they've, they've been later audited, and it's been turned out that they haven't spent the funds the way that they were, that they had committed that they would.
So, this, this will be audited, or there will be some businesses?
That, that would be at the risk, but we, we would not approve this if it's not one of these eligible, you know, expenses to be reimbursed. You know, again, they're, they're probably, at the end of the day, there is that, that chance that someone could spend the money for something that is not on here, but that, we, they would have to qualify for the expenses, you know, to, to show. And these are just some examples, and I'm happy to send out the.
Yeah, I would like to have a memorandum or something where we can find all that information and stuff, and it will possibly be a good idea for us to show that to the lawyers, so they know what we're dealing with, so. And that's just personally.
Absolutely, yeah. And then, we, we are kind of in a mood that we really would like to push this to, to launch fairly soon, but obviously, all those things will be taking place, and we have, you know, the other localities have been consulting their lawyers as well, so we, we will be, you know, we'll be bringing our attorney to, to the mix as well. But I will send out the draft to council as well, for, for you to, to see the additional details. So, some of the eligible expenses I mentioned here are payroll expenses, lease or mortgage payments, technology enhancement, which is big, as, you know, companies are looking at how they can transition to be, have a greater e-commerce presence or, or newer software to, to process taxless payments or what have you. Additional PPE and cleaning supplies and services, as well as insurance. And then, so, so moving forward, there's, there's quite a bit to do. We're, the PIOs from each locality and the group that's been working on this are going to get together at the end of the week to talk about marketing the program. We are looking to launch within the next two weeks to get an open enrollment period of at least a month. We will close it at the same time, so we're reviewing all the applications at the same time. We are looking to purchase software to assist in some more review of applications, I think that that's a must for this to be feasible, it's going to be a lot of work, and, and there's an unknown demand there, so we're not sure if we'll have 50 applications or 250. And so, we, we may need to be having a conversation in a few weeks, you know, that, we'll, we'll just have to have a strategy of how are we going to deal with, you know, with applications as they come in. So, each locality will be reviewing their applications, it'll come through the same grant system, software system, but each locality will be receiving the grants from the businesses in their own locality. So, Christiansburg will receive theirs, Blacksburg will receive theirs, and the county will receive theirs, and the unincorporated areas of the county, like Shawlsburg. We will need in, in the next few weeks, and, and like to council as well, a, a review committee formed, which could be business services groups such as DCI or the Chamber, small, the Small Business Administration, banks, citizens, business owners, et cetera. And we'd like to keep that group from five to seven. Their role would be to look at, are they meeting all the eligibility requirements, and are they eligible for their maximum allocation?
Andrew, if, if businesses have applied through the, through the states and the banking systems, and, unless, are they eligible for these also?
They would be, they would be, although the, the same expenses would not be. So, that would be part of the application process, is to, to verify that, that they're, you know, that none of the dollars that they are putting forth were expenses have been reimbursed with other programs, whether it's the new state program or, or the PPP program.
You decide it's a review committee.
That would be, you know, that is something that I look for guidance from town council on, you know, this is a general makeup, we haven't really gotten further than what you see on the screen.
I would really like to see banks taking over this, since they have the software system already, and they know a lot of, they have a lot more information about who has applied, how their whole system is connected with the government right now, maybe looking into the local banks, like National Bank or Catters Bank, and maybe a really good way to just trying to get them to help us with this.
Well, it does say business service groups, banks, citizens, business owners. I think it should be a collage of committee members, but I would definitely, and this is just me looking at this now, recommend that we don't have a political figure on here, a town representative, but I don't want this committee to be political whatsoever.
I'd agree.
I think it's a great proposal, that mix looks really good to me. I'm glad there's a bank on there, but I think it's, how, I mean, how, how, how could you improve on that, you know, type of mix, to have an objective group that we can trust? Anyway, I think, I think it's, it's great.
And I'm a, I understand what Mrs. Hicks said, but I think if we involve a third party, it's going to complicate things a lot myself, because I think the money came to the town, and the town needs to give it directly to the business. So, that would be my inclusion, to make it a more streamlined process instead of a more difficult one.
Do you have a dollar figure set aside for this? I know that we had talked, or I thought I had talked to Randy and you, that, you know, some of this COVID money that we have received, that we can use to help with utility and rent payments for citizens, is that true?
We can, we would, we would be working through a third party.
We'd have to go through a third party, like McKee.
Correct, correct.
But, but we are setting some funds aside.
Yes, yes.
We haven't come up with that figure yet?
No, not, exactly, we did have a, a figure that, that we had thrown out, but it really needs to be flushed out more.
But isn't that an active program right now?
Not to complicate things, we do have the CARES Act CDBG program, which is, which is currently activated, and that was the $62,000 pot of money that, that we are working with New River Community Action to, to execute a $25,000 mortgage assistance program, and then there, then we, we are looking to work with McKee, as well as other groups.
Let me make sure I have the straight, under the CARES Act here, we have been allocated a certain amount of money. Do we have any idea how much of that CARES money we've already spent?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question.
It can't, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, because as Andrew mentioned, the CDBG money is a separate pool of money that, basically entitlement money through the CARES Act that we received, which we have provided to the community support organizations like McKee and the.
Community Action?
Yeah, New River Community Action. And also, we received the, basically reimbursement through the health money through the CARES Act for rescue squad. That's basically lost revenue due to decreased calls for, for COVID-19. We can reimburse ourselves. Um, we can reimburse ourselves for all our cost, costs associated with the testing center, which includes our purchase of the initial test kits, also our staffing of the, the test center. Uh, we can reimburse ourselves for things like, uh, it, it, the extra sanitation and cleaning that we've been doing. If it's anything beyond what we normally do, then we can count all those expenses. Uh, we can count the purchase of all, uh, protective equipment, whether it's N95 mask or it's simply the surgical mask for, for employees and customers. Uh, any of the physical measures we put in place, such as barriers between counters. Uh, we put, installed glass in a lot of, basically all of our open counters, so that, uh, the people behind the counter can be protected. All, all those, all those expenses are eligible, and we, we do plan on charging those expenses. They're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Val could probably give you a better idea than I can, but I can tell you we've already spent hundreds of thousands.
That's our personal PPA. This is, this has to do with the Small Business Recovery Grant. Can we stick to this? Instead of, because this is, the PPE, we, we've talked about that for months when it first arrived, that, what we can spend on. Can we stick to what's, what this is? Are you done with this, or?
I am. Yeah, we don't have a dollar figure set aside for this that is set in stone. I think we, we have, uh, the town of Blacksburg, we penciled in $500,000. Uh, we don't, we have an unknown demand. The county, uh, when, uh, Angie Hill, their finance director, briefed them, she, she was not committal to a figure as well. Um, and, uh, and so I do think, you know, we, i- it could be, uh, it could be anywhere. It could be $500,000, but I, I really can't say at this point, since there is kind of an unknown, uh, unknown demand at this point. But, uh, but it, what we're looking at with other projects, it would fit in to, uh, our, we'd have $2 million allocation. If that, you know, if, if there was a desire to, to, you know, to make it less, or, you know, to, to let, that, you know, if, if council had any feedback on that, that would be great.
I think it's a solid, I think it's a solid approach, is my personal opinion. I think it's, how could you improve on that?
Can't you start to know, but Val is online and available, if anyone needs her. I just need to.
Well, before we let you go, Andrew, where I was going, we're spending this money, and it looks to me like this is going to go on for a while. We're going to have enough money to keep this up?
Yes, the, the dollars today that we, we, that we're talking about this evening have to be spent by the end of the year. So, um, we're hoping that it will address the need as much as we can to the end of the year. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we'd have to return the dollars.
That's correct. We're going to have a surplus, aren't we, Andrew?
Well, it's possible, although we, to be honest, we don't want to if we can justify spending the money. So, so I think the idea is to not have a surplus as long as the, the, the costs are justifiable.
Use it or lose it?
Yes.
Transition to give you that money.
But, but we do have to do certification to federal government that, basically, the money's going towards what we say is going.
I was just worried we're going to be, maybe short, but it doesn't look like that's even in the picture.
I think it's first come, first served, and that, and that's the point.
Correct.
Thank you, Andrew.
Anything else? Any other comments or questions? Keep the information flowing on that to us in between council meetings. Uh, staff reports, town manager?
Just to let you know, the chiefs are available. We'd like an update on the health task force.
Thing on the task force? I see Joe's in the background here.
Yeah, I can give a quick update. I've been out a little, but, uh, task force is still meeting on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. As I've stated before, the task force is doing phenomenal work in the region, and I think the task force is going to lead this region into recovery. Just an update on testing. Over 18,000 tests initiated in this region, which is a huge number. Uh, task force working really hard on that. Obviously, the media's spinning up more positive cases in the New River Valley. Can't deny that. I mean, right now, we've got 307 cases in Montgomery, 77 Floyd, 90 in Pilaski, 26 in Giles. Um, out of all of those cases, only 30 hospitalizations, and unfortunately, we've had eight deaths. When we talk about numbers in the region, the thing you have to look at is, like, when I reported to you in July, our positivity rate was over 4%. Right now, our positivity rate is 3%. So we're testing a lot of people. You test more people, you're going to have more positive results. So that's where we stand. Obviously, you have colleges coming back in. That's definitely an area of concern. Task force has worked really close with both universities, and they will continue to do so. Uh, future testing, I know there was a heavy push to get some testing in Christiansburg. Happy to report that we're testing at Christiansburg Middle School tomorrow. Uh, the task force, uh, testing is a little different. We were testing, community testing, two times a week. Uh, we reduced that back to one time a week for community testing, but the other four days, the health department is testing on site. So probably testing more people, or just doing one less full community testing day. A lot of that is focusing on community tracing and trying to dial in some outbreaks, and, uh, they're doing it through the health department on site. Uh, one thing to report, I think, uh, most of you know Tanya Hockett, that works for the town of Christiansburg, who now is with VDEM. She has been, she's worked really well with the task force and as a member of VDEM. They developed some tabletop exercises that VDEM took and incorporated our school systems in, and they run these with our school systems in Montgomery County. Uh, and pretty much, you know, they're running these exercises to help them understand, hey, if we have a positive case in the school, what are we going to do? How are we going to deal with it? And how are, how are we going to implement cleaning and recovery phase? So that, VDEM has already implemented those, and it's been highly successful. It's also been implemented with New River Community College, uh, in Dublin and also in Christiansburg. So, a lot of good work through the task force, phenomenal people, uh, much brighter than I am, working diligently every day to make this happen, and, uh, feel good about where we're at today in the New River Valley.
I have a question. Uh, do we have enough testing available for when the students come back? Which they're obviously coming back, but do we have the amounts and supplies that we need for that?
I didn't, I couldn't understand the first part. Was it for testing?
Do we have enough testing available for the people that are going to be arriving very soon to go to college?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's out of the task force realm for the most part. I mean, Virginia Tech and Rafferty University have taken their testing, uh, upon themselves. So when students come in, they make a command decision as a university, how are we going to test students? Uh, the task force and Dr. Bissell's been instrumental in assisting them, uh, but as far as taking the lead role in testing every student, the task force has not done that.
I believe all on-campus students at Tech at least will be tested when they move in.
Yeah, mostly when they come from, um, Notre or different places, yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Rafferty is just doing like, I heard from Rafferty students this week that they're doing the ones that are coming from other, uh, hot areas where they had COVID.
My understanding Tech's doing.
100% of on-campus.
On-campus.
I talked to one of the vice presidents today, 100% of on-campus. The off-campus are going to be strongly encouraged to do that. And the town of Blacksburg and Virginia Tech are taking a major role. Say, Mr. Bishop, he's a police officer there, but they are not going to tolerate the apartment parties and stuff like that, that I heard. Anyway, they're taking a very aggressive approach within the town and the university community.
Are they going to pass an ordinance or like Rafferty did? Do you think that's kind of, I think they're reviewing something.
They're reviewing.
They've taken some steps, but I heard today from both the assistant town manager for Blacksburg and, um, Dr. Key was with facilities, that, uh, there, there's going to be a zero toleration for that and, um, throughout the town, and they're going to be very aggressive, so we'll see how it goes. But this is going to end up being peer pressure is what it's going to be, and that's what they're cultivating, a culture of peer pressure, positive peer pressure within the leadership of the students to, to, you know, that's going to be the, that's going to be the make or break situation, probably, from what I'm hearing.
Going to close bars early too, I believe?
They're already done.
I have a question for you. Is the health department, uh, meeting also with, I imagine, your group of people that are doing all this stuff for the COVID ID health boards? And do you have the school board? Is it, is it part of the same group, or are they in a different kind of group?
Um, the school is a member of our task force. They're an active, daily member, and they're involved every time we have a meeting.
Can you answer for them, or if you have an answer, will you share with me or with council? Why is it that the schools, from what I'm seeing or what I'm hearing as a parent, that they are now going to be doing, um, checking for temperature as soon as they get on the bus? Is that something that maybe, has it been talked about? Because, I mean, I cannot really tell you that when my children go to school, a lot of the times, the parents just send the kids with a fever, and, and that was before COVID-19. So right now, I'm just kind of like, are you guys being proactive and thinking about, hey, maybe it will be a good idea not to have a swap for every student as soon as they get in the bus, but maybe check the temperature, just?
I guess my best answer, my answer would be that I'm, I'm not informed enough of school policy and their decisions moving forward, and their discussions with Dr. Bissell on that. I don't think I'm qualified to answer that.
She's our, our school board member, and.
Ms. Bond, right?
Huh?
Ms. Bond?
Dana Barton. Dana Barton is our.
Dana and Jamie Bothers.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, I think, uh.
We're three school board members.
Yeah, about Christiansburg.
Within the area, yes.
I would encourage any parent with school-aged children, K through 12, when they have questions like that, to reach out to your school board member, and they can get their specifics from them.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Joe, you got anything to add?
No, no.
You good?
And I think that's a good question, John. I'd be happy to, same thing, if I had to take students.
I have two special needs children. Well, one is special needs and one has asthma issues and stuff, so.
Is that all for you? Town attorneys?
Everybody to this point.
Any other staff? Ms. Hicks, are you ready?
My name, excuse me?
Counselor reports.
It's fine?
Counselor reports.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Ms. Hicks, you ready? Ms. Hicks, you ready to give your counselor a report?
Hey, Mike, I applaud you, that was a good job.
We've, um, we've already discussed, uh, within other moments of tonight's meeting, uh, through central business, arts board, wastewater sewers, so I have nothing else to add that's different.
Ms. Hefford, I know they're not having very many advisory committee meetings for Aquatic Center.
No, no, they're not, but I wanted to say that, uh, Ms. Caldwell told me, I saw her yesterday, and wanted me to make sure that, uh, I mentioned the flowers that are down there on the aquatic side, on that sign, as you look for it, as you're going out of town, and, uh, it looks great. And I don't think we've said anything during the whole year so far, this summer. And Mr. Winfield, maybe if you would do that, I think the flowers here in town are, are just great. And they're a great assortment, and some of them are pretty exotic, and I, I just would like to say that, that it's well done. The other thing I have to say here is about ACE, and I'm not sure if you know it, but ACE had their one-wire walk in 5K, uh, this past weekend, and, uh, I think they raised around $9,000. And, uh, I think that's commendable, thinking that the, the situation that we have right now, and, uh, they are doing a great job, and, uh, over there in the Parks and Recreation, uh, I think you've seen Brad Epple's little reports, and he has three or four ACE people working for him this summer, and, uh, and doing that, so, uh, the ACE situation is, is doing well, and, uh, the only other thing I would like to say is, Mr. Shelton, and I think most of you people know him, um, he passed away this past weekend, and he was a big, uh, supporter of the Montgomery Museum, and, uh, was really, uh, a, a good person and a, a good citizen to have, and it's a wonderful person.
Bob Shelton?
That's all I have.
Briefly, just to, uh, commend our engineering department and our town administration. During my day job, I work with a lot of localities in developing transportation projects. Not here in Christiansburg, of course, but I can tell you that is a big fat deal to get picked, and it means that, uh, Dr. Smoot, our CTV member, actually makes the final votes on these projects, and when we show that we can plan and prosecute and deliver transportation projects, it bodes well for our future, uh, applications. So hats off to town administration, engineering department for really becoming leaders. And, again, this is something I'm very familiar with, and that is a big fat deal to get this announcement, and it bodes well for our future as a community too, for our projects. Thank you.
Ms. Caldwell?
Um, we did discuss in the wa- water and waste committee meeting, uh, last night, uh, a line, a line item for, um, the Sleepy Hollow RFP study for stormwater. And that is, has been budgeted, uh, in this year's budget, but, uh, I think staff is wanting, like, a head nod to go forward with it?
Yes, I assume, I assume that you still do want to pursue that project, but just make sure.
All right, so this is a request, a request from staff, and it's a recommendation from the Wa- Water and Waste Committee, uh, that we, that we do, since it's already budgeted in the budget, that we do continue to pursue this. Or at least RFP, just like the college.
Right, okay.
Council, okay with that? It's already, in the budget, we approved it, but they wanted.
No, it's okay.
We're nodding our heads.
It's a big thing.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's okay.
And I'm just, uh, Brad, I appreciate you talking about the engineering staff. I think they've really done well, and, um, I'm sure there's a lot of the things I'm forgetting, but I will say, I do hear about the flowers downtown every year, and again, this year, uh, the Public Works crew have knocked it out. The art is beautiful. Um, and if you haven't been downtown, if you're watching this, go downtown. Take a look at it.
Randy, what is the name of the man who's in charge of it all?
Michael Huesman.
Yes, uh-huh. I hope that you'll, you'll make sure that he knows the comments that we make.
I certainly do pass them on. And we, I, I get a lot myself.
Now, they, he's, they need to post it on the website, the flowers that are, they are actually using, so if someone wanted to replicate, they could. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have it there.
Ms. Hicks?
I do. I got to have a shout-out to Brad Epple and, um, all of the recs department advisory team, and, uh, just for, just doing such a phenomenal job, and listening to some of the ideas, um, of even, uh, trying to make those Jill's Body Care packages for the kids, the special needs children in our community. That was a really great thing that we were able to accomplish this summer, even though the circumstances were not, you know, the, the goal was to have all these children to come to the recs department and to go to field trips and do all these things. My child, my special needs child, has been a part of that for several years in the past, and, and I know for me, it was just uplifting to be able to take some of these packages to some of the homes as well. Uh, and then also, um, just shout-out to them too, for just making sure that we're having, um, we're, well, Brad's working really hard with getting with companies, trying to install those hand sanitizers in all the parks in the town, and just, and they're with the sunscreen and everything, so it's been a really good, uh, team effort for them to do all that.
We can reimburse that, can't we, Randy?
Uh, sure. I am sure, uh, Randy will put it in there somewhere, so, yeah.
That hands-free water bottle filler at the rec center, that, I love that. So when we take our classes, that's great, yeah?
All right.
Because money will spend.
Anything else? We done?
Ready? Okay. I move that town council enter into closed meeting, as stipulated in the agenda, um, in accordance with Code of Virginia 2.2 dash 3711A1, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting is for council review of town manager.
Second.
Motion in the second, in discussion. Adam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hefford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Spies?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, we're going to take about a three or four-minute recess. There's six, oh, we're going to take about a three or four-minute recess. Mr. Winfield, you are not invited to the first part of this meeting.
Don't take it personal, also.
Nothing personal.
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion in the second. Adam Clark?
Yes, sir, Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
There's six, oh, thank you, there is no action to be taken from this meeting, it was just a review. Any other business to come before the town?
I have one comment.
Okay.
I think we've acted professional tonight, and I appreciate it, and I think it was nice, and I think everybody appreciated it, and I hope we do. It's just because of the love, right, Sam?
I really appreciate that, absolutely.
All right.
What is the hell is it, writer?
It is a six-way, seven-way table. Is there any other business to come before the town? Thank you very much.